The New Britain Board of Education, providing students with a high-quality education.
This time is 6:05. We would like to call this meeting to order from the New Britain Board of Education. It's our regular school board meeting. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Marino, if you would please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the Five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You could please call the roll.
Ms. Dale Sanders-Crowley.
Here.
Mr. Merrill Gay. Mr. Joseph Westrow.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane with a K.
Yo.
Ms. Monica Garton.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane with a K.
Here.
Mr. Matthew Marino.
Here.
Ms. Tanny Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
And Ms. Tina Santana.
Right here.
Mr. Gay is excused. If we could all have a moment of meditation? Thank you. And we will have public participation. Just need somebody to be a timekeeper because I will, we do have probably 10, 15 people signed up. If I'd like to keep it to about three minutes each.
Okay, three minutes?
Yes, please.
Do you know when you're ready to start?
When you do come up, if you could state your name, your address, and the first person is Samari Johnson?
I mean, we can restart.
My name is Sanai Johnson. I'm a seventh grader at Slade Middle School. And some of my strengths are I am a director. I'm self-managed. I'm an urgent person. I'm a visionary. I'm a career problem solver, a rest taker, a person.
Turn the microphone on.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I graduated from the Work It program. My seven-step plan is I will be remembered for being a modern-day Audrey Hepburn, creating a new book that will be respected for generations. How I will get to that plan is to graduate New Bern High School Academy of Finance, to get a personal stylist certification, to start my own personal stylist business in market online, to work as an online stylist for companies such as Fashionova, Stitch Fix, and others earning $60,000 plus each year, to ultimately work for big brands such as Gucci and Louis Vuitton, and to build my private personal styling business.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey Jones. My address is 206 Maple Street. I am in seventh grade and I graduated from the Work It program. My strengths are being a team player, a faculty stunner, and being scientific. My career plan is to find the rarest blue diamond after graduating New Bern High School. My name is Jeffrey Jones and I'm a researcher. I want to graduate from New Bern High and like go to the first class of math.
Good evening. My name is Alisa Johnson. My daughter is Sanai Johnson. She was the first person here. I just wanted to say thank you for allowing her the opportunity to be in the Work It program and allowing her to be able to speak this evening if I don't have anyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marcus and I'm a sixth grader at Slade Middle School and I'm graduating from Work It. Some of my personalities are best by five, on time, team player, relatable, magnetic, leader by example, teacher, advocate, and volunteer. The reason why you should hire me is because I'm a relatable employee and boss who makes decisions based on facts. Another reason why you should hire me is because I will always be on time and volunteer for good causes. My seven-step plan is to graduate from New Bern High School Academy of Finance, and win and play many sports in high school and college. I'm going to get a degree in business management. I'm going to start my own business helping kids improve in sports. I'm going to train 42 students per year, 100-plus K a year. I'm going to grow business by adding five trainers, 252 students per year, 500,000 plus per year. And I will be remembered for teaching kids teamwork, volunteering, and being respected leaders.
My name is Candace Nedini. I reside at 158 Kathleen in Bristol, Connecticut. And I'm currently assigned as a one-to-one parent Somali school in New Burton, Connecticut. I've been there since September of 2020. I want to thank you all for the open invitation to speak here today and to address contractual issues. First, I would like to say that I love what I do. However, my contractual issue stems from understanding that my recruiter with Delta T Group, limited liability company, has or has has or had a relationship with the district. As an independent contractor, this also means that I'm a low-wage, low-income worker. I receive no union protections, no medical insurance, no paid sick days, and no pension. Last year, I made, hold on to your pearls, $12,000. A tenth is for taxes because it's straight pay. I also have deducted from this wage $14.95 for occupational insurance. I also have a part-time job in retail, but due to the economy, my hours have been non-existent, so I can't remain silent. According to my Delta T recruiter, there were 750 contractual hours that were needed to be completed before I was to be considered for hire. I have only recently discovered from Donna Clark that this is not the case. So I am respectfully requesting that this honorable board review all of my applications on file with the district. I have applied for full-time employment as a para along with obtaining references since Delta T no longer has my employee file. My medical information is there. I passed the praxis test. And the fact that I have attended the job fair in January 21, 2022 has been met with silence. So my final statement in closing is, can someone contact me as to my application status? And I thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jacob Perry. I'm a seventh grader at Slade Middle School on Tolda Road. I'm glad to be here and I hope you enjoy my presentation. I'm taking on the path of becoming an author. These are my strengths. I'm artistic. I'm an observer. I'm a listener. And I'm patient. These are the steps I will overcome on my path to reach the finish line. I will graduate from New Bern High School. I will get a degree in journalism. I will develop relationships with libraries so that I can become a math tutor for children. I will write and publish 15 fables, at least. And I will become an editor for children's books. I will be remembered for creating and re-energizing lessons of the past in today's style fables. My name is Jacob. Thank you for listening.
My name is Zeta Henry and I graduated the Work It program from Slade Middle School. When I grow up, I want to graduate from high school, graduate from New Bern High School and focus on journalism and writing in 2028. My strengths are I am a hands-on, I am a helper, quick learner, task master, researcher, deadline-driven, independent worker 50% of the time, mediator, and I'm factual. I want to focus on gymnastics and soccer for exercise and fun, get a degree in journalism, write local stories for a newspaper, work for a longer newspaper, get awareness for my contributions to journalism, become a well-respected leader in my community.
Teresa Stranichak. Wait for the batteries.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Stranichak and I live at 8 Fairlane Drive in New Britain. I've been a para educator for 26 years working in this district. I chose this career because I felt that I could bring a caring spirit to the children of New Britain as well as the wealth of knowledge that could share, that I could share with teachers on a daily basis. I knew that being a para educator would help make connections with our most vulnerable population. It is not easy being placed in several classrooms where your schedule is constantly changing to suit the needs of our kids. I am called upon to assist in classrooms, asked to sub in rooms where there are no subs, asked to check in with certain students, make connections with kids that have a hard time coming to school, as well as assist with small group learning. All this requires an enormous amount of patience and time. Paraes need to be compensated for what they are expected to do every day. The demands have become tremendous, and therefore, we are asking that the district look at this and really realize what New Britain paraes are doing. There are always kids that need assistance with writing, math, reading, and just being able to stay focused on what they need to be doing. This year, we have had many challenging students that require toileting, potty training, and arranging my schedule so I can be there to help another para with these duties. I have had to literally have my bag of tricks with me so that at any given time, I am prepared with something to accommodate kids. It's sharing ideas, working out collaborating, and then also trying to support the social, emotional needs of not only our kids, but the adults in the building too. We are all struggling. I have to say that since COVID struck, the daily routine in the classroom has also changed. We are not only dealing with students who struggle academically, but emotionally too. As I prepare for small group learning, instructing kids who need extra help, I think how could a teacher do all this without the support of a para coming in to very often save the moment? As a para, I am not a babysitter, which I believe is still a word that is used to describe paraeducators, but I am an educated professional that prides herself on helping our kids achieve goals and attaining them. I am a vital part of the New Britain school system and deserve that respect from the board and the entire district. I believe in my heart that without paraeducators on board every day, the district would find it very hard to survive. Paraeducators are making a difference in our kids' lives. Thank you.
Debbie Gross.
Good evening. I am Debbie Gross and I have been a paraeducator in our district for 20 years. I presently work in the Pathways program at Pulaski Middle School. Our students have a wide range of disabilities with a focus on learning daily living skills. My job as a paraeducator is not just changing diapers. It's teaching our students to become independent, teaching them skills so that they can be productive in the world we live in, teaching them that even though things can be hard to keep trying and they can succeed. Due to the pandemic, our students needed to learn without notice, to sign into Chromebooks, join meets, share work, go into breakout rooms, and split screens, et cetera. This was our new way of teaching, though we knew our students learned best with hands-on activity, repetition, and constant praise. As a paraeducator, I had to teach through a computer screen the skills they needed to be independent. They did it. They learned it because we taught them, because we believe in them, and I know I am a significant part of their success. So now, more than ever before, paraeducators, pay and benefits, need to reflect a whole new level of initiative and intensity in the work we do in teaching and learning.
Sayadina Uda Torres.
Good evening. My name is Anita Torres. I am an inclusion paraeducator. I've been in the district for 29 years. On behalf of all paraeducators in the district, there are some concerns that we would like to address. Our concern is the amount of work that is unloaded onto paraeducators. When I first started, I was able to work with a small group of children, five to six maximum. Students were able to get the assistance and educational supplement they needed. Now, we are typically spread so thin, often between five or more classrooms. We no longer give proper attention to students in need. We are diapering students, pulling groups by ourselves, dealing with behaviors that would not be if we were not understaffed. Most of us have to work an additional job just to make ends meet. We are now doing the work of three or more adults. We should get paid as such. It's a hardship by unloading the extra workload and burden onto already overworked paraes. There should be financial compensation for this, the very least to make a living wage that will enable us to work one job, therefore allowing us more energy to devote to the students that need us. Thank you.
Linda Roman.
Hi, I'm Linda Roman. I reside at, it's actually 75 Sterling Street. Somebody puts Slater Road, but anyhow. I thought I was prepared until I listened to these ladies talk, but I was asked to speak because you guys reached out and we are in negotiations. And I just saw this on the news last night, printed it out. Really, what are we worth? The average hourly wages rise 5.5% in April from 2021. We haven't had 5.5% in our last entire contract, which covered several years. From 2019 to 2020, we had a 2.6% increase, no step changes. From 2020 to 2021, we had 1.4%. And so over all these years, a 4% increase. Minimum wage, however, in all these years, from 2018 to 2023, is going to $15 an hour. And my weekly goal is complete. And just in the last couple of years to try to match this, minimum wage in Connecticut is up 18.6%. Over all of those years, it's up 48.5%. We're getting 1.4 and 2.6. I just want to say, I've been in this district since 1995. Did I say, since 2005. Our responsibilities are skyrocketing and I don't feel like we're receiving competitive pay when we are doing a lot of responsibilities. We're playing social worker. We're playing guidance counselor. We're paying, playing teacher, doctor, nurse. We're playing a lot of caregiving roles. I know I'm going to get buzzed because I'm going to talk too long.
One minute left.
Huh?
Minute left.
Thank you. When I first started this job, it was to keep a schedule that my kids had with school. They were in the New Britain School District. I was born and raised here. We're the ones that everything's falling on. We have substitute teachers. We have substitutes for substitutes. We have substitutes that... We had one recently that didn't understand how to click on Google Chrome to even open the internet. We have subs that sleep. We have subs that do a lot of things that I'm going to try to zip my lip on. But the thing is, is we are the ones, the paraes are the ones. We are in the trenches with our kids. We are the ones they're confiding to. They don't have that private time with teachers. And I've had three crises, massive crises in the last few weeks. And these kids look to us because they trust us. And we're the lowest-paid people other than probably the Witsit workers. BSA's get more than us. TA's get more than us. I can go to Stop &amp; Shop right now and get a full-time job for $17.30 an hour. Oh, wait, if I want to pick food orders, I can start at $19 an hour. I am top step after 17 years and I'm making $22.95 an hour. I just want to leave it at that. Sorry, you have to go after that, honey.
My name is Christopher Mees. I graduated the Work It program. Harrison High Street, LA 33. I'm in seventh grade and I go to Slade Middle School. Here are some of my strengths. I'm a team player. I'm fast. I'm a trendsetter. I'm a creative problem solver. I'm a hands-on learner. I'm respectful. I'm a translator and I'm a mediator. My seven-step plan is to graduate from E.C. Goodwin Tech Culinary Program to become a chef, then research attending Lincoln Tech Culinary Program. Then I want to become a world-known chef. Then I want to create show of recipe books. My name is Christopher Mees.
What was the name?
Kyren Navarro.
Kyren Navarro?
We're coming.
Of me.
Sorry.
So, good evening. My name is Lori Butterfield. I'm currently the interim principal at De Loretto Elementary and Middle School. Mr. Salas Cabala's assistant principal is on his way as well. We are here to acknowledge Kyren Navarro for receiving the Cabe Leadership Award. So Kyren Navarro is a young man who is sure enough of himself to unbashedly display a unique, independent, and quirky side while remaining unfailingly respectful. He is polite and very aware of his manners in any interactions with adults and always is quick to offer his help when it is needed in any type of situation. In addition to that, he has a highly-developed sense of compassion and thoughtfulness, which he displays in such simple but meaningful ways as asking how someone's day has been or how your vacation has went. He approaches these interactions with a level of sincerity that communicates a genuine concern and empathy. Kyren is that rare student who is able to earn respect from everyone he comes in contact with, both from students and teachers. This is not only because of his diligence with which he attacks his schoolwork, but also because of his keen sense of leadership, which he is able to employ to motivate many of his peers to follow his example. Kyren generally stays on an even keel, but he makes no secret of when he is excited and engaged by something, and others in the classroom feed off of that enthusiasm in a positive way. He definitely contributes strongly to a tone of respectful interaction and is an excellent model of citizenship. Kyren is thorough and conscientious in all of his schoolwork and seems highly perceptive of the value of setting an example for others. He is kind and empathetic and self-aware and undaunted when he happens to make a mistake. Kyren is eager to help when he senses that he can make a constructive impact for someone and displays strong empathy for any struggles he sees. He is truly a leader and a young man of admirable character. Our other Cabe Award recipient moved, so did not attend.
So we do have it on the agenda, but I guess we have to close out a couple of participations. So we can stay. Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's okay. That's fine. So is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Anyone else who would like to address the board? One more time? Would anybody else?
Sorry. Hi, I'm Tonda Samford. I just wanted to kind of wrap up the student presentations that happened today and tell a little bit about Work It. They're all outside celebrating with their families. And I know Mr. Verdi and Mr. Clarkin were here as well. Work It is a program where they have an opportunity, the six-week cohort, where they get the students through some interest inventories, diving deep about who they are as a learner, who they want to be. And then they have to present it to their peers and work with their peers to identify all those career skills and goals. We all know once you tell it out loud, number one thing for telling a goal is to say it out loud. They said it in front of their class. They wanted to take it to the next step and present it to you.
That was awesome. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Is she trying to rattle somebody else up? Anyone else who would like to address the board? One final time, would anybody else like to address the board? And if it's okay with this board, I'd like to flip-flop items F and G to do the student recognition first. So this talks about the Cabe Student Leadership Awards. This program was developed to give local boards of education the opportunity to recognize students, student achievement and potential, and for the board itself to be recognized as a community leader. School principals select the names of two middle school students from their buildings who demonstrate a distinguished leadership in school activities and daily life as defined by the criteria developed by a subcommittee of Cabe's Board of Directors. Nominated students should exhibit the following leadership skills: willingness to take on challenges, capability to make difficult decisions, concern for others, ability to work with others, willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly. ability to honor a commitment. Tonight, the Board of Education proudly recognizes the following 2022 Cabe Student Leadership Award recipients from De Loretto Middle and New Britain High School. So Kyren Navarro, from De Loretto. Karina Rosario Oyola, from De Loretto. Leiliana Faith Maya, from NBHS. And Liamzy Muniz Natal, from NBHS. If you could please come up, we have some gifts for you. You can shake hands with all the members and stop with us.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Do you wanna have them stand over in here? Yeah, that would be awesome. Have the board stand up too? If the board members could stand up, and then we'll just stay right where we are. And I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read on behalf of Mr. Pierce, who had a family emergency and couldn't be here tonight. He said, "If I'm unexpectedly absent from the board meeting tonight, I was wondering if Ms. Sarah wouldn't mind reading this" for the Cabe Leadership Award recipients. Let us begin with Leila. I know her as Leiliana. I've known her for, since she was five. But we'll call you Leila now. First, I believe I owe Leila an apology. When I was speaking with her in the cafeteria last week, Leila informed me that she plans on attending UConn in the fall. As an enthusiastic UConn alum, when she told me the news, I immediately responded with the loud cheer often heard at basketball games. And he put in all large capital, UConn Huskies. Sorry, Leila. However, the gracious manner in which Leila responded to my silly bellow is a glimpse into her sterling character. The teachers who nominated her commented on her respectful, delightful, and caring demeanor, as well as her respect for others. Significant for this award, Leila couples that characteristic with true leadership in the classroom. She is a role model for inquiry and academic integrity and genuine in her willingness to help her peers. As such, she demonstrates a quiet and inclusive leadership that is all too absent in the public forum. It is these characteristics that inspired one teacher to write about Leila and the Cabe Award. I do not know of a more deserving candidate. So we'd like to congratulate Leila. Liamzy is our second recipient. I first met her earlier this year while she was presenting a piece of her spoken-word artistry for a small group of staff members in the Student Assistance Center. Flash forward to last week, and Liamzy had scheduled a meeting with me in my office. The purpose of the meeting was her desire to create a spoken-word club for students after school. Two things were notable about that meeting. First, she had anticipated every possible logistical and programmatic requirement that I could think of, and she had an answer for every one of them. But even more impressive, she is a senior, and she will be graduating in June. Her dedication and leadership is such that she is spending her last few weeks in the high school establishing an activity, not for herself, but for the students of tomorrow. Truly inspired leadership. Congratulations to both Leila and me. All of New Britain High School staff and Board of Education are proud of your accomplishments. Thank you. So we will move on to item F. This is a donation to NBHS Golden Hurricanes in honor of Ben Chaney. If Nelva Marquez...
Band.
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 Oh, and you know what? See, I read the script, I'm sorry. You're absolutely correct. This is from Ms. Nelva Marquez Green and Kathy Chaney. So Nelva Marquez Green, founder and director of Anna Grace Project, has graciously chosen to pass a donation of $3,500 received from the Newark Academy to the NBHS Marching Band in honor of Ben Chaney. This donation reflects a small piece of work Nelva has done for the Hurricanes as she continues to make significant impact on the program and create opportunities for the students in the NBHS band. Marquez Green has been a champion, advocate, fundraiser, and dock connector for NBHS since her work began in the district in 2015. It has not gone unnoticed. The Chaney family has made numerous contributions to the NBHS Marching Band over the past decade. In 2012, their son Ben Chaney tragically killed in an automobile accident less than four years after graduating from NBHS. Since then, his mother, Catherine Chaney, father Ralph, brother Todd, and all of his friends have come together to honor and remember Ben in a way that would benefit the community and the marching band he deeply cared for. The Chaney family has raised over $45,000 for the marching band over the...
Make that 80.
80? We are pleased to welcome Ms. Marquez Green and Ms. Chaney tonight to thank them for their continued generosity and kindness while also honoring the legacies of their children. Thank you for bringing so much hope and joy into our community over the years. We are forever grateful.
Thank you. And I'm not being hating about the amount of money that it's germane. This is going to be our final benefit. It's been a decade, and you know, all good things must end for a whole bunch of reasons. 10 years seems like a lot, a good place to end. We've had people leaving the district who knew Ben. Nancy, for one, who knew him from the days our children played on New Britain Soccer. Mike Forrester knew him as a student at Slade. So I was so excited when Nelva called me to ask my permission to make this gift in Ben's name because it really is an incredible gift to the band. But the fact that she put it through Ben's name is a personal gift to me, and that is priceless, and I really do appreciate that. So I said 80, I'm correcting because this is the last year. I really wanna get to 100,000. So that's a $20,000 goal. We have $3,500 from the Anna Grace Project. Her post on Facebook spurred Chris Brummer, a former employee, to make a $500 donation from her charitable giving fund completely because of that. So we're $4,000 closer to our goal. September 29th at Albarium, the last one. I hope to see you there. We've always had such wonderful support from our district and from our administrators. So thank you, thank you, thank you, Nelva.
It probably would have been like more, I don't know. Fake checks cost money, and I'd rather give money than, you know, buy a fake check with it. But I did wanna say really quickly, I did wanna say really quickly that, you know, it's just been an honor being here. It's been an honor being in New Britain every single day. And you don't have to know me very well to know that I love Harry Potter. I love Harry Potter because there's a theme of love winning. I love Harry Potter because there's two different worlds. There's these wizards, and there's these muggles. I kinda feel like in this world, we have wizards and muggles too. Grieving mothers are wizards. Grieving mothers want two things: to have their child remembered and to honor children still here. And there's a reason we do that. We understand the preciousness of time, and we understand that not one moment is promised. There is no tomorrow, right? So I hear and see the tears of the parents. I hear and see the tears of parents. I hear and see the tears of the board who had to do two years of COVID. And I see the tension and the strain and the frustration. And I grieve as a mother because you're the first defense. I heard this woman right here say, "These kids are coming with mental health issues, with SEL concerns." But I want to encourage you to stay the course because when we stay the course... I wanna tell you, I got a phone call this December 14th that changed my life. And it was from one of your students, a graduate of New Britain High School. And she's here today. Her name is Jamina Walker. She's one of your own, stand-up Jamina. And she called on December 14th this year. And I didn't even wanna get out of bed to say, "Nelva," I did it. And she graduates from Central Connecticut State University. Whether our children are in the bands, whether our children are in the business academy, whether our children, whatever they are, I just implore you to stay the course. And Nancy, thank you for teaching us that it's the attitude of gratitude. And there are days when we were in the arena, our faces were marred with sweat, with tears and with blood. But with that attitude of gratitude and with that joy we can bring every day when our fun circuits aren't sun-dried, we can make a difference, whether it's through band or through Jamina. And I think Jamina wants to say a few thank yous. Thank you.
Wait, don't go yet, Jamina.
I'm a great introduction. But I do wanna say thank you to all of you guys. I couldn't damage without my New Britain family and my family. I want to graduate New Britain High, Academy of Finance, with a MFA. She started my journey. And that led me to graduate and graduate with a bachelor's in accounting and finance. And just all the kids out there that you can do it. You have a great community. I also work here, so I do not have to start here. So just good community. Thank you guys so much, and thank you.
Nancy, from us. Happy retirement.
So, item two, A, personnel discussion, discuss a personnel matter. I'm assuming executive session.
Wait, before we go into executive session, I was just asking if there was an opportunity for us to speak after public participation?
Okay. What do you think that one? Sorry. I know.
All right. So personnel, discuss a personnel matter. The full board, Ms. Mary Ellen Manning, Superintendent Sarah, do we have an attorney present? Attorney?
Westby.
Westby? Westby. All right, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session with those.
Go move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We will be back. All right, we are back. I will entertain a motion on the personnel matter discussed in executive session.
I make a motion to approve a settlement in the Green Heart of Honor.
No, second. Second by Ms. Santana. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Any abstentions? No, okay. Item A, superintendent's report.
So you have the printed copy in your side file. I just wanna bring up a couple of things I think that need to be said. Our Public Service Academy was recognized as a quality level. And you know, our Public Service Academy is new. And so, but it was, it's received an award already. The distinction shows, Academy ranks among some of the best in the National Academy Foundation Network of over 600 academies. The accomplishment is a testament to the work put in by our leadership team, our teachers, counselors, staff, advisory board members, and students to ensure our students' college career and future ready. That was a highlight, also a highlight. And I know Mr. Escobalas was there last week at Quinian College, University, sorry, for the State Department of Ed's Increasing Educator Diversity Symposium. Two of our students received college scholarships. Sharad Cutino and Marcus Casio were honored with a scholarship. And I know you were one of the moderators for the event. And we've been in educator rising now, I think, four, five, four years, something like that. Right, and we did give a little bit about what ed rising is. And also, just another, another one of our academy highlights, the Health Science Academy's been chosen to attend and present at the 18th Annual NAF Benefit, which will take place on May 11 in New York City at the Mandarin Oriental. Each year, the highlight of the evening is the presence of our incredible academy students. Not only is this exciting for our guests, but it's a great opportunity for our kids to meet and network with their industry leaders. Typically, only 10 out of 600 academies are chosen to attend. So New Britain High School will have a presence again there. Again, we received the donation tonight from Kathy Chaney via Nelva Marquez Green, which was a wonderful thing. And I also just included again for this month the, some of the dates, important dates to remember for New Britain High School as we start to near the end of the school year. And we have the Cabe Student Leadership Award. So that's really the highlights.
And a question from Superintendent on her report. Committee reports, curriculum. You didn't have curriculum, correct? All right, finance.
We met last Monday the 2nd. We discussed numerous partnerships the district is participating in. Received some donations as well as both numerous purchase orders, both that are on this agenda tonight, as well as will be voted on tonight.
Thank you. Policy. I don't think you guys met. Oh, you did meet.
Sorry. Do you want me to speak to the questions? Yeah, that's okay. Actually, we had a call. It was canceled, but we needed to revise a policy that's coming up tonight. It's on the consent agenda, I believe. And it's around our English language learners. Very briefly, eight years ago, a complaint was filed to CHRO from a couple of citizens here in the community regarding the...
Dual language program?
Yeah, not even regarding dual language, but more importantly, denying access, having our students been denied access to regular mainstream classes as a result of the ELD curriculum that was in place with the former superintendent. So this is eight years old. And what we noticed as we're working with our lawyers now through this is the policy had not been updated, although our practices have been over the last six years. So this was just a housekeeping that we needed to bring it in alignment with our current practice. That was policy. That was in a nutshell.
Health and wellness, have you guys had anything?
Yeah, wellness, Matt. We are reviewing our current wellness policy, and that will be sent over to the health nets policy at the meeting. We've also have conducted about six focus groups at the elementary schools on school meals. So the food court members are generating reports on that.
Board reports.
Personnel.
Oh, personnel, I'm sorry.
Okay, personnel, Matt, last Monday.
Okay, personnel, Matt, last Monday, and we discussed a few new positions and looked at the vacancy list, which had grown, but we received a report from Mary Ellen about the jobs here, so it sounds like some of these positions will be filled. And we have a number of positions on the consent agenda tonight, and that's it.
Board reports. I will say that I sat with, Mr. Verdi was still here, but myself and older women Lou Ortiz, and Costa, we sat with him for probably a good two hours and just had a great talk about middle school, right? And I'm looking forward to hopefully maybe going with Pulaski. It was just open dialogue, just talked about their day, talked about things that they're trying to plan. It was just, I wanted to thank him. It was really great conversation. Anybody else?
I'd like to announce the New Britain Local Prevention Council is having their Prevention Palooza in the park, Walnut Hill Park, this Saturday from ten to two. I think they came to speak to us a few months ago, but it's just to raise awareness about underage drinking and drug use. And there'll be vendors and music and entertainment.
Ten to two Walnut Hill.
Ten to two Walnut Hill.
Oh, and then tomorrow night, Tuesday, May tenth, there's a public and parochial school student art show at the Museum of Art.
And our students will receive awards for their artwork.
We have some award winners. Awesome. So it's six to seven thirty at New Britain Arts.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
Joey reminded me, he has a next Friday the twentieth, his music media at New Britain High School.
I was wondering about that, okay.
Is it seven o'clock?
Seven. Usually seven. Where's Mr. Smithy? He left.
Oh.
Oh, he would know.
Sorry, it wasn't seven.
He would know.
Is it?
I thought it wasn't seven.
You thought it was seven?
Yeah.
I think so.
We'll be sure to share it. All right.
I'm here for my birthday.
We'll celebrate your birthday at Music Media. It's usually a really good time. All right, so moving on to presentations, item A, Bridges, MBTC Student Data Review.
Good evening, everyone. I think you can hear me, so it's easier than using this mic. So about a year or so ago, this board graciously approved the additional positions of supervisors for the Bridges program with the goal of achieving increased academic results, among other things. And so tonight, what I want to do is highlight some of the successes of the Bridges program. You have a large packet, there's a lot of data in there. This is going to be, this is, this presentation is going to be smaller, it's going to highlight some of those. If you have questions about some of that data, what I'd ask you to do is reach out to me later, and I can certainly answer questions. There's a lot of information about DESA in there and other things, so we're going to touch on some key areas tonight. I have my colleagues here, I have Kim Hurt and Kim Billy, they are supervisors in the program, and Donna Swaby and Edie de Simone. Edie will be, Edie will be presenting the elementary data, and Donna Swaby will be presenting the data with respect to secondary. And then we have Sujar Lomoni, who will also be talking about success at MBTC, where she is the principal. Next slide, please. Okay. So you can see, these are our programs, Bridges Elementary, it's at Chamberlain and Holmes, Bridges Middle is at Slade, and we have the program at the high school, as well as MBTC. Next slide, please. So the Bridges program is designed to support kids primarily who have an ED, emotional disability, or kids that have behaviors as such that they're just not successful in the general population. This program this year, we've seen a lot of success, and we're going to speak to that in a minute. It's in part due to this leadership, but I also want to point out, as you heard, our parents, it's our parents, our behavioral support teams, our teachers, our students themselves, their families, the collaboration coming together have really made a difference this year. So it's not just the leadership, I want to be clear, it's about everyone working collaboratively. Next slide, please. So currently, right now, in our program, so I want to speak about outplace kids. So at the moment, right now, today, we have 88 students outplaced in private programs outside of New Britain. Of those 88, 50 of them are behavioral students, okay? 50. The average cost of tuition for one of those students is around $70,000, and you can add another $10,000 for transportation, and then depending on the student and the level of need, à la carte, that can go up substantially if they need power support, et cetera. Right now, in our district programs, the ones I just mentioned, we have 170 students in these programs and district. Bridges Elementary has 43. We've had no outplacements to higher levels of support outside of that program this year. At Bridges Middle, we currently have, we had three outplacements. We've also had two return, pending return, they'll be back in this, for next year. At the high school, we've had three outplacements, we have 52 students there, one pending outplacement, and two slated to return. And at MBTC, we currently have 41 students, three outplacements, one pending, and two are returned currently, okay? That may change by the end of the month and into June, but right now, those are the numbers we currently have, okay? I'm going to now ask Edie de Simone to speak to some of the data at the elementary level.
I'm going to have Kim come up, just because she's my partner in the elementary level. When, Kim and I met over the summer, we decided we needed to kind of pare down and really focus what we were going to work on for this first year that we have the supervisors. So there was three areas that we targeted this year. The restraint and seclusion was the first area that we targeted. I want to switch that there. So you'll see in September, it was pretty high. That was, you know, I think the district as a whole was really hopping in September, and I would say probably schools everywhere. But as you see, it steadily decreased, which was really nice. And because that went down the rate that it did, if you want to go ahead and switch it, the next one for inclusion time was able to increase. So again, in September, we didn't have any kids in the mainstream, but that was when we were really hot and hopping. But as our numbers went down for, you know, negative behaviors, we were able to increase the time the students were in the mainstream. That was a big focus because as a district, we've really traditionally not done well with getting the kids out of the program, the mainstream, and they've been in the program for years and years. So we've really committed ourselves to working on that. In February, you see kind of a jump there, and then it increases. We had one of the teachers, our four or five classroom teacher partnered with a mainstream teacher and co-taught. She started off with just reading, and then increased it to both reading and math. And the kids just did so wonderful with it. And this will be our first year that all of our fifth graders are either have been exited and will not go to the Bridges in middle school, or we have three that will, but they'll be in the mainstream 80% of the time, and they will only be associate Bridges for about 20% of their day. So that's a huge success for us. And then the last area of focus really was reading, and just looking at that history of reading scores and what they were by the time they got to ninth grade, after having been with us, was kind of dismal. So we had a big focus on that this year. We are just starting this week to do our reading scores for the spring, so I wish I had those because I think they would be, you know, really impressive to look at. But we started because the beginning of the year was so difficult for our kids, we didn't even start teaching reading until down November. The rest of the kids in the mainstream were getting it right in the beginning of the year. So if you're looking at just what we got from our February DRA scores, at that point, they only had about three months of reading, and they had both, for the kids who got zero to six months of growth, and the kids who got seven to 12, they outpaced the kids that were in the mainstream. So, you know, I'm excited to see what they're going to be for, for this week. And that's at first.
Everybody knows me, Donna Swaby, district coordinator for Secondary Special Education, but I would like to introduce Kim Billy, who is our supervisor for Slade Middle School, Slade Bridges, rather. You know, she is really, you know, our boots on the ground, if you will, this year with providing oversight for the middle school Bridges program. Unfortunately, Dr. Lawrence was not able to make it tonight, so I'll be, I'll be speaking to the middle school and the, and the high school, but unfortunately, like I said, Dr. Lawrence is not here with us tonight. So if we can just, yep, thank you. So again, in terms of our focus at the secondary level at the start of the year, in July, we met, and we really wanted to focus on fidelity of implementation of our specialized classroom management, which is a behavior management system that's used sort of tier one for all of our programs. So we wanted to make sure that that system, which is a very complex system, is implemented with fidelity. You know, we also wanted to improve our data collection systems at the secondary level. That was an area of need in terms of being a little better organized and also looking at data on a regular basis. One of the other things that we focused on specifically at the high school was parent and student engagement in the PPT process. As students get older, we really want to hear their voice in the PPT process, and so that was something that was focused on at the high school. So with that said, we'll take a look at the ELA data that has been organized by Ms. Billy. This is, this indicator that we used is I Ready, which is our benchmark that we use for all children in the district, grades, rather, K through eight, okay? And so with that, when we focus on sixth grade ELA data or reading data in the Bridges program, you'll notice that there has been an increase in their scale score when we look at the sixth graders. So each sixth grader that was assessed, who took both the pre and the mid, demonstrated gains in their scale score. So the first graph really talks about the scale score, and the second graph is really looking at the growth by grade level, okay? One thing that I just want to note, I don't want to forget, is that this data represents 27 students in grade six, seven, and eight in the Bridges, Slade Bridges program. So the 27 students, five of them either only took the pre or only took the mid, but 22 of them actually were assessed both pre and mid, okay? And so each of the students, as I said, in sixth grade that took both, actually demonstrated growth in their, in their scale score. There were, let's see, two students who remained at the same grade level. It is possible for you to increase in a scale score, but stay on the same grade level, okay? However, so there were one, two, three students in sixth grade who actually increased their grade level as well. Does that make sense? Yes, okay, all right. So then we can go to the seventh grade slide, please. Okay, and so in seventh grade, there were nine students who sat for both the pre and the mid. Of those nine seventh graders who took both, eight of the nine increased their scale score, and one actually declined in their scale score. So, you know, some of the reasons for a decline could be that that second time around, maybe the student just wasn't in a place mentally, maybe emotionally, to really focus and do well, we're not really sure, you know, but this, this can happen. In terms of the seventh grade students with the increase in their grade level, six of the nine students actually increased their grade level as well, right? And I do want to say that a lot of these students, I believe all of them, were multiple grades below grade level at the pre, right? So, so we have to celebrate even an increase in the scale score, even if their grade level doesn't increase. Because, you know, we're really talking about from October to February, if I'm not mistaken. So it's a half a year of instruction that is yielding these results. And like I said, some of these students are increasing grade levels in that short period of time of instruction. And then the next slide, eighth grade, okay? So there were nine eighth graders who took both the pre and the mid, seven of those nine increased their scale score, one of the nine remained the same, and one of the nine decreased in their scale score. This is the eighth grade. And then in terms of grade level, when we look at the grade level, six of the nine increased their grade level, two of them, two of the nine students remained at the same grade level, and one decreased. So in terms of, like, when we're looking at the whole program and thinking about some of the strategies that Ms. Billy has implemented, there were three strategies, I think, that really influenced the data, right, and caused the data. One is that she ensured that teachers had access to the ELA curriculum, as well as StudySync, which I believe is a platform that talks about all of the, that gives the students different access points, if you will, sort of like supplementary online materials, if I'm not mistaken, that gives students access. I'm looking at my two folks who, who know better than I do what StudySync is. Another strategy that was used is that teachers, the Bridges teachers, were able to attend NBU and collaborate with the general education teachers, so that they are getting the same sort of in-house professional development around curriculum, so they know what's on the curriculum. We have a responsibility under the law to give students with disabilities access to the general education curriculum, you know, to the best of our ability. So having them collaborate with the general education teachers, getting access to that same sort of training and professional development, will increase the teacher's ability to give the kids access, right, in their programs to the curriculum. That's very important. They, Ms. Billy also has weekly data meetings every Wednesday, you know, she meets with the team, I want to say about two hours, for two hours or so. And then, so she's looking at data every week. Sometimes it's achievement data, it might be the behavioral data one week, could be attendance another week, but there's this regular sort of practice of looking at the students' achievement data, analyzing that data, and really looking at, you know, implementing consistent strategies. I believe the focus was around reading comprehension. And so really working with the instructional coaches to, to identify, I'm sorry, informational text, so, so really increasing the reading comprehension for the literature and the informational text. And they were able to do that by working with instructional coaches, the Department of Academics instructional coaches, as well as the special ed instructional coaches, to, you know, sort of improve that consistency of practice when it comes to those instructional strategies that help to increase students' reading. Okay, any questions? Next slide. All right, let me make sure I get to the right place here. Okay, yes, we are looking at the sixth grade referrals by month, right? Yes. And so you will see that in sixth grade, the referral data peaked in October, but there has been a steady decline in November, December, and January, with a slight increase in February. And again, we attribute that to students who are not responding to the program. We've had a few students, Mark had mentioned, a couple of kids that had been outplaced or are pending placement because they're not responding to the system. They're still, despite all of the interventions and the practices we have in place, you know, their behavioral data is not necessarily trending in the right direction, right? It's actually increasing, okay? Seventh grade? Yep, seventh grade. So in seventh grade, however, we do see a steady decline from November. It kind of peaked in November, but there is a steady decline in the number of referrals by month. And again, we attribute that to increased fidelity of implementation, and specifically around the corrective teaching, which is one of the types of teaching that is sort of packaged within the self, the specialized classroom management system, right? There are multiple types of instruction, corrective teaching is one of them. Next slide. And then with the eighth grade, again, there is a bit of an increase in the referral, again, which reflects students who just were not responding. We've also had students who have been outplaced from that class as well. So, you know, while the data really is trending in the, in the wrong direction, a lot of that is because of the students not responding to the, to the program, okay? And so now we're going to go into the high school Bridges data. I just want to make sure I'm getting to the right slide here, which I believe is the credit attainment. I'm sorry, I have the full presentation here as well. Okay, here we go. All right, so there has been an increase in the number of students that are on track to graduate in four years. Now, we do have a comparison, the 2021 and 2022. So there was only one student in 2021 that was on track to graduate, meaning graduating in four years, okay? However, when we look at 20, the students who are on track to graduate that are in cohort 2022, we actually have eight students, right? And so there's been a huge increase in the number of students that are on track to graduate from last year when there was no supervisor versus the ones that are on track to graduate at the end of this year. We've also seen some increases in other cohorts, so again, so in cohort 2022... So again, so in cohort 2022, last year, there were only 50% of the students in that cohort were on track to graduate in, in four years. However, this year, there are now 80% of the students in cohort 2022 that are on track to graduate. Cohort 2023, last year, there were 44%, this year, there's 67%. Cohort 2024, again, last year, no supervisor, 40%, this year with a supervisor, 57%. And then for the cohort 2025, our freshmen, you know, there are 67% now sort of on track to, to graduate. Yeah, so those are our freshmen. And so if we look at the next slide, you'll see this is sort of a line graph to explain what I just, what was just shared with you, using bar graphs. And so we really attribute the, the, the change in this data, the improved data, we attribute that to the use of the Odyssey Credit Recovery Program, which is an online program that was used during on-team electives to give students in the program an opportunity to take this course and get the credit for courses that they may have failed in previous years. And I say on-team elective, some of our teachers, in fact, I believe all four of the teachers now actually teach a sixth course, which is an elective on-team. We were finding that when students left the program and then went upstairs for electives, they may not sometimes get to that elective course. You know, there was some, a lot of skipping, but by keeping them on-team, you know, we have increased their attendance in an elective and ultimately have also, for some students, increased their chances to graduate on time. And again, it's, it's really having that supervisor there who's really paying attention to the details, seeing the bigger picture of the program and working with the team to put these strategies in place for improvement. And so if we can look at the, I think we're looking at the monthly focus, right? Focus room referrals, right? Okay, so now this is our behavioral data, you know, the focus room is a component of the program. And so this bar graph represents a steady decline in focus room referral data since November, after there was a slight increase in, in October. Again, the strategy that, pardon me, that we feel has impacted this data or caused this data, Dr. Lawrence has created a new regulation room. And so students can kind of go in there, you know, the occupational therapist worked with Latani to, Dr. Lawrence, to create this, this space. And so with them being high school students, they kind of go in there and they kind of lead their own de-escalation, if you will. There are, you know, different materials, if you will, and equipment that the students can use to help with de-escalation. Weighted vests or, I think there's like a beanbag, you know, the lighting is different. And so students can go in there and really help to de-escalate, you know, behaviors and engage in sort of their own, sort of monitoring their own de-escalation. And so we, we do attribute that, having access to that space as a reason to why the, the focus room data has decreased. And then, so this is just another view of the decrease in behavioral data from the, looking at it from one, the first quarter to the second quarter, you see that there is a huge decrease. Next slide. And then this last slide for New Britain High School Bridges really just shows you that there's been a huge increase in parent involvement in the PPT process as well as an increase in the students as well. And I do believe the, the two bars represent last year versus this year for both parents and students. Thank you.
And I'd like to bring Principal Duralamoni to talk about MBTC. For those of you who don't know, MBTC, it's our most restricted program in district. And it's located on the campus between, behind Lincoln and Slade. And so Sue is going to talk about that a little bit.
Hi, everyone. At TC, like Mark said, we are the most restrictive environment. We do serve students in grades K through 12, so we have, we have quite a range. And we've made some very nice growth using the I Ready system and their assessments. So students that took the test in the fall and then again in the winter, we had 47% of them make their typical growth in reading and 53% of them make their typical growth in math. So we're seeing some, some nice movement there. I think Mark had said earlier that we had three students come back from outplacement, so we're able to support them in our setting. And the most exciting thing for me is now that, you know, before we were on the Pulaski campus, if you remember that. So we really were separated and we were doing a little bit of mainstreaming with middle schoolers, but that was the only opportunity we had. So we now are on the campus of Slade and Lincoln and it allows us to do much more mainstreaming. So we have one elementary student who is now full-time in Lincoln School, doing beautifully. We have one student in middle school who is taking one class and we have two students who are taking two classes. But even more exciting than that, this year for the first time, we have someone who is sort of the liaison, if you will. He was sort of hired as the TA, but is the liaison. We have a vehicle working with Rich Valerio. And we have four students taking six classes at New Britain High School with many of them, you know, there's just so much more exposure there, right? To different options and things they can do. So that is something to really be celebrated. We've had three students go back to the Bridges program, meaning they've needed less support than what we provide at TC. And while I sit here that we had four students on merit, which is the highest level of the Boys Town model that we use, we, as of this week, will have about seven, we will have seven students on merit. Students are really understanding that system and succeeding with it. We do have four trainers in a district and three of them happen to work at TC, so it's very, very helpful. But something you probably wouldn't otherwise know is that one of our students, Angel Gonzalez, who is a junior, has been named the Boys and Girls Club Student of the Year. And that is quite an honor. Usually students from New Britain High School are named that. And so we're thrilled and we've spoken with James Jones and Jason Gibson, et cetera. Some of our folks helped to buy him a suit for the prom, which he will then wear. Joey Vaverech helped with that as well, which he will wear to his celebration. But in closing, as you probably know, I'm retiring and I asked Donna to stand with me because I'm thrilled that she will be my successor. As you heard, Donna has been just such a good friend to me and a support and I know she's going to take TC to the next level based on her knowledge, so.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions about what we talked about tonight? If not, we can move on. And if there's other data in there, because I know there's a lot of stuff, feel free to reach out to us and we'll get back to you with your answers to your questions, okay?
So when you copy her, like, when you copy, if you could copy the board on your responses, because we probably all have, right, make sure they go, you know, the proper channels. Hmm? I know. I do understand. All right, so, item, just my glasses off. Item five is the consent agenda. Is there anything that you would like to pull off the consent agenda?
Item O, please.
Oh, I think we were keeping, anyway, okay. Anything else to come off? If we could take off item O. I will entertain a motion to approve the BID awards to community-based organizations for work within the 2022 Summer Learning Experience SLE program. I have a second.
Second.
My organization contracts for the summer, for the past nine years.
Yep.
Looked up.
Yes, okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Mr. Lestro is abstaining. So new business, A, approved Homes Elementary School educational specifications for renovation projects.
Excuse me, everyone? Hello, everybody.
Hello.
So I'm here to provide just an update on the Homes project and also any pending projects that we have on the books right now, specifically starting with the construction pending closeout projects, Smalley and Gaffney. The city is currently waiting on the filing closeouts for the reimbursements to come back. Smalley is an approximate, approximate 29 million and Gaffney at 2.9 million. I have been in contact with OSCGR, the office there, and have asked them to prioritize Smalley as that's the larger amount. And they are working right now to create the audit reports for us and they're, we're expecting that to be done by end of July, hopefully, to have something back from them. They will reach out to us if they need any more information from us, but they have received all the information that was submitted by CAP and they're reviewing those projects and we're hoping to have closeout, more closeout information by the end of July.
Did you say 29, really, in first of all?
That is correct.
And what was the other project?
Gaffney.
Gaffney.
2.9.
2.9, okay.
Yes, thank you. Truly.
How long ago was Smalley completed?
2019, I'm thinking.
And Gaffney was when?
2016, 17.
So student born, year Gaffney completed, started kiddy guarding now, and someone got a full reimbursement.
That is correct.
That's why she's here, we're firm of all those processes, right?
That is correct.
You don't have any unclosed projects.
Yes, I'm sure I'm going to provide more of an update in the next coming weeks with where we stand with that. So we're here to review the grant, well, not the grant application, but the education specifications for the Homes project. But prior to that, I want to also discuss the grant application process for the project. We do have the feasibility and now you have the education specifications. I, I hope you've had some time to review all of that data. But we can't move forward with the grant application as of yet until we have approval from the bounding, bonding council, I should say. So as of right now, that's pending, but our goal is to submit an application June 30th this year, by end of June 30th this year, to keep the project moving forward. One thing to mention is that if we don't move forward with the application process this year or end of June 30th, there are some pitfalls that we may run into. There could be more costs as far as materials and supplies for construction if we move that forward. As we're seeing that now, we actually are seeing that with some of the stuff with the ADA project already. So I'll present on that on another date as well. Under the existing application, we are receiving a 95% reimbursement. If we wait another year out or more, then that could mean that we, you'll get a reimbursement of 79.29, whatever the local percent is. So with all that said, we have the specifications that you see in front of you, which are truly a collaboration between the school administration, the architects, the consultants that were hired. And they took a lot of information into consideration over the last 12 meetings that they had. I do want to emphasize that, again, if the project is pending, the education enrollment and the capacity data will have to be revisited and reviewed and entered again if it's not submitted, the application is not submitted by end of June 30th this year.
Who's that pending with? Is that pending June 30th, that's what the bonding commission first?
Correct. They, we have to wait on approval from the bonding council.
Do you know when that meeting is?
I don't know. I don't know, unfortunately. Are there any questions about the specifications specifically? We do have KBA here, if there are any, but.
So I'm going to say this very neatly.
Sure.
Very, very neatly. Windows, I did not say anything about windows in the education specs. I don't know if that's part of educational specs, just, okay, then I will.
Nope. That's way before, yeah, we're, we're in the beginning stages. You won't see anything about that specifically right now. So just wanted to make sure you guys were all aware and if there are any questions?
Does Homes have a school-based health clinic currently?
Sorry?
Does Homes Elementary have a school-based health clinic currently?
No, no.
But this, would include one for THC?
Health clinic, school-based health clinic?
Yeah.
I don't, I think, I think it does actually. They do have their own office.
Yes.
Yes, we have a school-based health clinic, just like we have at Chamberlain Gap. I mean, sorry, Smalley, same thing at Homes.
So for any renovation, I mean, it was decided to put an THC.
Yeah, now it's there, community-based, community-based health clinic.
Right, so to that point though, so where, where is that going or are you building on to Homes?
It's, it's on the same footprint of the building, we have designed the space for that.
Okay, because I know where like the nurses' office is.
Yeah.
Is it, you're just going to like extend that?
What, what it is right now is that we put requirements.
Yep.
Then we'll put the blocks together.
Yeah, okay.
And when we do that, we'll review with the principal and everybody, so these are the blocks, these are how you want to pay.
Because I have put it in anybody that would listen to me, like making these schools bigger, right? Because we're at 95% and maybe the city takes down a 20%, so just saying, I've been putting that into the team. Funny, you might mistake it, but isn't that one of the new things that they're accepting now, school-based health centers?
It's all reimbursable.
It's all reimbursable.
Correct.
It didn't used to be, but that's just.
When we did Smalley, it wasn't, Chamberlain it is.
Yes, oh, awesome, yeah, okay, thank you.
I'm just looking at a picture and it seems very ambitious for, like you said, making the footprint. That's a tiny footprint, that building. And a lot of renovations, things that's a small city. I'm just wondering how much is, is that feasible based on size itself? You have to go up and up approximately.
We are, we are taking portion of the building out and putting a two-story down, to search it out.
Would Pershing take it out?
It's, it's in the design phases that we have, we need it what will come out. When we put the blocks together, then we will know what's going on. But whatever we will do, we will be in touch with the principal to make sure that the requirements are.
But it's more during the design phase.
It could be in the design, yeah.
Ideas will come about during the design phase. Yep. So if you see that expansion up.
There's a, there's a two-story building coming, a portion of it is going to be tomorrow.
Have you consulted any neighbors for a project too? Because it seems like when I visited Homes, some person was looking for neighbors' yards for windows. I'm just wondering if you noticed going up and stuff, there might be some neighbor concerns.
The way it is coming up is based on like right now, open space, like a courtyard kind of a bit. And that's where it's going, so it will be out surrounded. It's not really out that somebody is.
Yeah, that's more the political side and not the educational specs. All right, so windows are for next time, okay? I, that was the only thing that really stuck out to me because I, I trust the staff over there to give you what they need.
So that is a good update to share about Chamberlain. The city has, Homes specifically, sorry, that works Chamberlain Homes. They have provided the additional space, which is on Stanley Park, 1.4 acres.
That's right.
So it's included in the design phase now, so we are going to be able to use that green space and the community space used as well, so that's included in the, in the base.
Oh, that's awesome.
There is no space for bus turn around or lights out, we don't know parking.
Yeah, yeah, it's bad.
So in order for us to develop all the parking spaces and everything, we needed to take the place capital and everything out of it. So we requested and talked with on the city side and said, what place do you need? And we gave them the outline.
They gave it to us.
It was 1.4 acres.
You should have a walkway going over Stanley. Get the kid's steps in, check, go up and go down. Yeah.
I'm trying to agree with you on that, but I saw that the school, I was sort of reading, people said, oh, we take a walk from Parkus. Traffic going on that street.
Yeah, yeah, it's bad, that's not a great.
It's like dance going across shuttle meadow too.
Yeah, but even the back room, Ny Road coming up, the traffic on O'Donnell. Oh, my house is right on the corner there and it's brutal, okay? Sorry. All right, any questions on this one? Because we are voting to move it to the next level, right? This is so you can go to bonding.
You vote in your vote.
Cannot change it after we vote on it.
Well, if you took seats.
All right. You probably should have voted before you, but. All right. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve purchase order for K5 math center kits in the amount of $73,872.95. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And Mr. Kane, just for your benefit, we, because there wasn't curriculum, we thought we would keep them off just in case you had any questions. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, approved purchase order for renewal replacement of mystery science kits, grades K through 5 in the amount of $57,400. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, approved bid waiver and contract between the Answers in the Room Educational Consulting, BKB LLC, Brian Butler, and the Consolidated School District of New Britain for preschool staff training in the amount of $13,990.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't want to oppose, but I should probably abstain.
Abstain. Ms. Santana will abstain? Item E, entertain a motion to approve the contract between McCandlin Consulting Services LLC and Consolidated School District of New Britain for webinar for preschool staff in the amount of $2,400.
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I abstain as well from this one?
Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Ms. Santana is abstaining? Item F, personnel, approved memorandum of understanding between Consolidated School District of New Britain and New Britain Federation of Teachers Local 871 regarding pay rate for staff training from July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023 work year. There is no committee review. I would, I have a motion.
Move, I move.
Second?
Wait to have it reviewed, send back to committee?
We'll just have a second to discuss. I need somebody to second. Thank you. All right, discussion, I would like to hear about the MOU.
I.
So this is a similar MOU that we've done with teacher training in terms of training. So we do it with the Boys Town and middle years, that also come into the districts. So we want to clarify it for our local 871 members, so they have time to be able to prep as well as to put on that other half to be a professional developer, if you will, at that rate of 75. So it happens throughout the course of the school year, as you can see that is outlined in the MOU, and it's just a way to ensure that our teaching staff receive compensation similar, if not a little bit more, than their current rate that they have for extra duties, because they have a certain skill set, they're trained, they're qualified, and really, it's actually cost savings, as opposed to going outside of the district and getting consultants. So we're very, we're in a good position to have our certified educators that are awesome, cross-trained, if you will, in this, and that allows them to kind of switch hats periodically throughout the year. As you can see, it's not too often, but when we do call on them, we want to make sure that we do it consistently with an agreement that we've done before.
I'd like.
How much do you look at, okay?
It's in, page 234. So I did have a question on, just because I know we have VCBA's and I see RBTs, are we thinking about bringing on RBTs?
So they're referenced in the MOU for the, for the future, and also just for our own reference-keeping processes in case some of other staff members who have been trained in the same strategies, so that we know it in the same rate. So the 871 MOU, we reference some other classifications simply as a way to make sure that the union, as well as our payroll understeers, both get the same rate per hour.
Okay, thank you.
And we did it for two years, so that we don't have to come every year, so we did it for two years.
Ms. Santana.
My question is this, I see that you, I hear what you're saying, and you're putting the investment in the teachers, so then are the paras also getting compensated too? How does their compensation work for the same time?
So if, well, certainly if we had any parrot educators that would fall into a trainer that the People's Services Department would utilize, then we would, we would bring them into the same, the same rate, just like when we gave them for 10 and a half, if they're being utilized in different capacities for, for the work that they do.
So to maybe, for, maybe to highlight, so an RBT is a certification, right? So if the parrot was certified in RBT, they might fit into this MOU?
Correct. And that's why we'll take a.
Understand spec at a lot more than I let on.
Okay.
But I'm just asking, if, if we're compensating them apples to apples, you're going to be, you're, you're going to be. It's everybody altogether.
If you're that was, was, that had this training, I, I would, we would absolutely, you know, agree to give them at the same rate, just like we would for, for the other folks that are kind of cobbled in as reference for the 871 MOU. Sure, absolutely.
So when you're talking about, I can ask my question inside of an email, so then that way it'd just be easier for you to get back to me later on with a hard number of how many of your staff or what percentage they make up that have that certification that would qualify for it.
We have that for people services, absolutely, they have it.
Absolutely, okay, okay.
Did you just say, is it two-year agreement?
It's a two-year MOU.
Okay, the date on it is next June, is, should that be 2024?
2024, I was just going to say, you said two years, it should say 2024.
It says 2023.
Twenty, it does say 2023.
Right, we'll print that, thank you.
Yeah. Who signs that, you or me?
MOU?
Yeah.
I, I did.
Okay, that's what I thought, all right. Because I was just going to say, I can't sign it tonight, but, all right, just with that small update. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item G, approve a contract between, I would, accept a motion to approve a contract between Wheeler and Consolidated School District of New Britain for school-based behavioral health programming. Any second, a second discussion? I would actually like to hear about the partnership with Wheeler Clinic.
So this is similar to what we have already in the district with CMHA, CHC, and Klingberg. Those are, Klingberg is a K5, the others are K through 12. This actually came about when the mayor's office reached out to my office to have that conversation with Wheeler. There's no cost to the district, they have, we provide services, we need to provide a space for them. We chose Delo School because we currently don't have a partner in that building right now, so this would be a great opportunity. Also, when we're talking about our kids that are outplaced, we have many of our kids of that, you know, whatever it was, 15 kids, some of them are over at North West Village School, which is part of Wheeler Clinic. We have a relationship with them already. Also, many of our families utilize Wheeler, so it's just a perfect relationship, as, you know, and they're expanding here in the New Britain community, so it just makes a lot of sense to bring them in as, as another, another resource for our families.
Absolutely, and this is in lieu of, like, hiring additional staff.
Correct.
Right, and they can, they work with the parents. Right, I was just going to say, and they work with the parents and, and students.
And to let you guys know, we also, you know, they're in, they're in other communities, and I have reached out to those other communities where they're located, and we've had positive feedback from those groups, so it was, it seemed like a win-win situation.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, perfect. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item H, entertain a motion to approve purchase order and bid waiver for firewall upgrades for the city of New Britain in the amount of $483,645.27.
So move.
I have Jeff, you have your one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion, I know, Jeff, you presented this at Finance, and we just thought it would be a good opportunity for the full board to hear about our work with Nextdoor and their IT.
Absolutely. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, um, great, just didn't want to hit the mute. Um, yes, this is through our work with the city IT that's happened back with the first S R one fund. So this and actually the next item on here are both part of that work to improve the ability to ultimately bring, you know, further expansion of Wi-Fi into different parts of the city, but the work is specific to the head-end room's capacity with the city.
Any questions?
I don't have a question. I would make the same statement that I made the last time this came up, is that we're doing this with, across the street, and we should get some publicity stating that we're doing this, because I see that there's publicity for other things that goes all around here. I think we should get credit too. We're not just taking, we're also doing things to help.
Where's Ryan?
I don't know how you live on war about doing it, but somebody can share that with the mayor.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, that's a good point, and, and maybe we have Ryan do a little write-up, because I think this is, it's just great, because this helps the community get logged on too, right? All right.
I have to say, for the entire two years of the pandemic, we, our district of the school was the one that lit up all of the sites. I mean, we, we had our kids there, and they are gracious, Boys and Girls Club, library, YWCA, YMCA, you name it, we, we, we had the funds, and so that was part of that initial 4.7 million or whatever we got for S R one.
Oh, you do remember that?
Yeah.
And some of it needed to be used for IT.
Yes, that, that was really the, the crux of all S R one was.
It's so much, I can't keep my.
IT, yeah, it was all just getting our kids connected and their, their one-to-ones.
Yeah.
Wait, but just to be clear, actually, at the start of the pandemic, even before the check kicked in, the city had negotiated Papas actually having cars parked outside, was that?
No, that was us.
No, the city did.
That was us.
Really?
That was us.
With Sheila.
That was with us, yeah.
Yes. Yep. Yep.
That wasn't Papas?
Well, it was with Papas, but through the district.
Yeah.
No, you know what, because Papas.
It's Sheila, Sheila. No, it was Art Sheila. No, it was Art Sheila.
Yeah, it was Sheila.
I was thinking of something with Papas.
No.
It only came up recently because they were sold.
Yeah. It was Art Sheila, he's a proletarian with us.
No, they used, I used to make fun of the fact that they were parked right outside of my house, I was like, I got some good car passing here.
Right, nice, strong signal.
You can come over here.
All right. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, any abstentions? Motion carries. So item A, aye, falls in the same bucket. Entertain a motion to approve the purchase order and bid waiver for head-end room server upgrade for the city of New Britain in the amount of $841,613.52.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Same scenario, I think maybe we should get with Ryan. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item J, we'll entertain a motion for the chief financial officer to request to carry over nine unification days from 2020 to 2022.
Second.
I need a motion.
Oh, motion. Second.
Any discussion? All right.
I'm just going to abstain, since.
Oh, yep, all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Kane abstains. All right, motion carries. Any other items to be added?
Just one really quick thing, I'm looking at the board calendar and for the month of May, and for meetings for personal finance, the right date is listed, but the wrong day of the week is listed. It says Monday, the 31st.
So you could probably send an email. Because it's probably Tuesday.
Yes, the calendar's Tuesday, it's the typo.
Yeah, okay. I would say just send a quick email. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.